The 425 council work session to discuss the budget. Would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole here. Mr. Jones. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mr. Walper.
Here.
Mr. Hurt.
Motion for agenda.
I'm sorry, please say aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Again, we're just here today to discuss some. We have gotten some requests via email that Michelle has worked out, and I don't know if we want to just start with Michelle handing out some new options. We can start with that, and then just to have the meeting, open discussion if anybody's got any regarding suggestions or comments or whatever. So, Michelle, if you want to go ahead and start us with a couple of things that you've got there.
Okay. First item is a request from Mr. Lind quite a while ago, actually.
Do we need to be tuned in to this?
No.
If you want to. If any of you have questions about what we published, I will entertain questions. I didn't really bring it because we kind of talked about it Thursday morning, but if you have questions I want to talk about, it's excellent, so let me know who can do Mr. Lind had asked me earlier to be able to share how much revenue we had from new growth, so the standout you have has two sides to it. The first page is non-TIF property, and it's using last, the current tax rate for the year we're in today and showing what happens to our property taxes. They actually go down by $359,000, so I think that's probably important for everybody to understand. And if you remember, when I talked about the property values over a month ago now, we had a loss in taxable value of nearly $20 million, and that's what you're seeing here. That's why we have a loss in revenue if you stay at the same levy rate. He was also curious about what happened within the TIF districts, and if you want to, we can go through this line by line. Residential is probably the significant one. We have an increase in residential valuation that generates about $206,000 of tax, additional tax revenue from actual new items being added to residential. Now, that does not necessarily mean new construction. That could also mean commercial, buildings that were previously taxed as commercial that have been converted to be taxed as residential. There's a few exceptions to that, but at any rate, and especially when you look at the commercial on the next row and you see the loss, that's pretty close to the same thing as our increase in residential. I'm guessing there's some correlation between those two figures, but the increase in the rollback is providing additional revenue on residential. So, your total increase in revenue, again, this would just be if we stayed at the same tax rate, you're getting to additional revenue of just under $786,000, but we lose significantly more than that in commercial, industrial, and utilities. Even though some of that is going to be replaced by the state replacement funds, this is what's really happening in the true property taxes. So then, if you want to flip the page over, you can see what we're, what we have happening within the TIF districts. This is only the increment, so I didn't address the base because the base is incorporated in the numbers we looked at on the first side of this. This side is just in the increment. You can see if we keep the tax rate the same, we would have additional revenue of $105,000. And you're probably going to say it doesn't make sense that there's a decrease in the rollback for residential, and all I can answer is it is very complicated with the county about how they address rollbacks in TIFs. Rollbacks generally apply to the base, but sometimes they get into the increment, so it's, it's very complicated to walk through that calculation. But the bottom line is that's, that is what we would be looking at for the change in the property values. So, the next piece I have.
Michelle, can I ask before you hand out?
Yes.
So, going back to the front, the first page again.
The non-TIF property.
So, if nothing changes, we're going to get an extra $785, $689 just from residential?
An additional, yes.
And then, can you tell me of the commercial, industrial, utilities, don't we know a dollar amount of what we're going to get from the state at this point in time on that backfill for this year, or no? Don't we have a defined number?
For 15?
Right.
We do. I don't know if I have it off the top of my head. It's about $900,000, I think.
For all, all three combined?
Yes, because it was only based on 5% rollback, but for '16, the year we're looking at, it'll be based on a 10% rollback. So, depending on where you end up with the levy rate, you're probably somewhere in the range of 1.8 million for fiscal '16.
For refund?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle, but in other words, we're being rebated by the state, commercial, industrial, and utilities, or commercial, industrial. So, really, we're getting, the revenue, we're going to, additional revenue, we're really getting is a couple million dollars.
No, not additional. First of all, I don't want it to, I really would prefer not to tangle up what we're going to get in property tax revenue versus what we're going to get in state reimbursement money because they're separated and one can go away at any time, so we're going to get less property taxes, period, if you leave the rate where it is. We are, at least for this year, supposed to get additional revenue from the state that will replace some of that, yes. And because of the increase in the residential due to the increase in the rollback, that net will be more likely for '16.
So, this is what it would look like if we didn't get anything back from the state?
Right, because I'm, I'm telling you about property tax revenue only.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. Yep.
Michelle, this is down the road a piece, and maybe not relevant to this, but it's a question I have regarding what the state's plan is beyond '16, fiscal year '16 for backfilling.
I have that same burning question.
Article in the paper the other day by one of the representatives gave the impression that they were looking at not filling that pretty soon, in a few years, for.
And that is, that is a question I have that we're going to ask some of, some of our resources to try to find out what that proposal is. It's funded right now for '16 unless they take action to unfund it. The property tax law laid out a guideline that they would provide that rollback again in fiscal '17, and that after that, it would be frozen at the '17 level, but they have not put funding into a budget for '17 and beyond. So, it's, that 1.8 million, feel relatively comfortable we will receive it for fiscal '16. I don't know what to say beyond that right now.
Thank you.
Anything, any other questions about that particular handout? Are we good to go? All right. I also had a question, another great impact, so I've added an option to that worksheet. And this has changed several times since Thursday, as you all know, but, so, I think we'll walk through this one a little bit more. So, option one, if you recall, was the first level we asked departments to turn in, which was the base level request. Then we added option two, which added the additional request. Then we added option three, which is what was published, or what will be published tomorrow. That's expected to be in the paper tomorrow. And that, if you recall, we used the additional requests plus what it would cost if we added three police officers and three firefighters and wage adjustments. Then, we also had an option adding, option four adds the three police, three fire, the wage adjustments, but also has some other line item adjustments that we've made, which are some changes to expenses, some changes to revenue. Option five, very similar to option four, except that it only adds back two police and two firefighters. The other things are the same. Then, I think on Friday, I was asked what it would cost if we did the base plus the additional, so basically, we're at option two at the top, and then picked up the other line item adjustments, which was the changes that I handed out Thursday morning, increases and decreases to expenses and revenue. It just does not add back any police, it does not add back any firefighters, it does not address wage compression. So, that option would result in a 3.91% increase to residential property taxes and oddly, a 3.91% reduction to commercial, industrial. I checked that about three times, and I don't know how we happened to pick that, that it was exactly opposite a positive and a negative, but that's what we got. And that would, your, your property tax collections would increase by $251,000 over what fiscal '15 is if we do that, and the projected state commercial rollback replacement would be 1.85 million. Then, today, I was asked for another option, which was what if we did the additional level and the other line item adjustments? So, now, we're adding back the other line item adjustments, but then they want to know what would it take to get down to the current year levy rate. So, it's going from, it's taken everything in option six and then just saying what would we have to change to get to this year's levy rate? And what we would have to change is we would have to find changes of $570,501, either additional revenue or reductions in expenses, and those are not proposed or identified. That would just be the target if, and that's if you adopted option six, so you're, you're already taking the additional requests that were included in option two and making the line item adjustments. That does not include adding back police, fire, or wage compression. We have so many options, it gets confusing to keep track of, but that's where we are with those.
Michelle.
Yes.
In every one of these that talks about the other line adjustments, are they the same in each one of the options?
Yes.
Those other line item adjustments?
Yes, as, as what was distributed Thursday morning.
Okay.
The only thing that would change is property taxes and commercial rollback replacement. Yes.
Michelle, again, going back to option two, the additional request, that is that far right column?
Yes, on the printout that you have.
Every department.
Yep.
Okay.
And general fund only, obviously. I'm not dealing with road use fund or any of the other funds, but yes.
So, then that would, so option two would be fully funding the proposed animal control, for example?
Yes.
Which would not be in one and would not be in the other line items. That would be additional request, and it seems like there was one other thing that...
Well, the other, other line item adjustments does make a few tinkers, I would say, to animal control, but really should keep it at the additional level requested in option two.
So, for addition, again, in option two, again, additional requests other than animal control, that doesn't include wage compression?
No.
Do you remember what else that would include?
It's, it's, well, there are several, yes, MIS is a big one, the additions for that, but there's also additional revenue being recognized in that level. So, there are several places where departments requested additional funding, and if you, the easiest way probably to tell that is if, if you have the Excel sheets I handed out for the base level and the additional, and the supplemental sheets that say change in cost at those two levels, if you compare those, you should be able to kind of see what's changing between those two, because there are multiple changes in multiple departments, some up, some down.
Okay, thank you.
Tom percent?
Yes, I didn't make copies of that. I did go through and calculate, we've had the question about a 10% reduction, and the first question is always 10% of what? 10% of expenses in each department, 10% of property taxes. I, I did go through and calculate that as to how it would shake out for each department if we just based it on 10% of the property taxes levied for that department. That works pretty well for most departments. I had to tinker with some to make that make sense, but I do have that. Obviously, the total reduction is about $4.2 million. That's a, that's a big number out of operating, general fund operating budgets. If you want to talk about that more, I can. If you want me to get copies to you, I can do that, whatever you wish.
I think, if you have those copies, why don't you?
I don't have them, I can make them.
No, no, I mean right now, but I mean...
Yeah, I can get copies to you. Yep, I will be glad to do that.
Yeah. The other, I think that the unintended consequence may be, if that's the right word, when, when we reduce the levies, when we reduce personnel to get to that, that also has a consequence of reducing revenue in a lot of cases, and it's hard to, it's hard to, to compare reducing, if we reduce staff or reduce expenses, then we're also reducing revenue, and that's hard to...
Eliminating programs.
Yeah, we eliminate programs, so we eliminate revenue, and, and it's just, it's really hard to figure out how much revenue you're going to eliminate by eliminating programs, or pieces of programs, I guess. If you eliminate a total program, that's, you can figure that, but when you're eliminating pieces of programs, then it's harder. So, anyway, but yeah, if you would get that, copy to them, please, maybe in their box or something. Mr. Mayor. Yes. Michelle, in option one, two, six, and seven, we're not eliminating any position, are we?
I don't believe so.
Do you know of any position in, in any of those options, as it's budgeted, that we could eliminate, that we wouldn't have to fill? Have we, has anybody had that kind of discussion, that maybe there's an opportunity to?
I think, I haven't heard one department in all our meetings with them say they have an extra position. If council has programs they want to eliminate, that could eliminate positions, but I, we need to hear from you about what you think we're doing that we shouldn't or don't need to.
And then, in the three, four, and five, in none of the requests we got from the apartments, did they ask for any more positions, did they? They didn't ask for three police and three fire, and they didn't ask for wage adjustments?
The wage adjustments came through human resources. That's typically how we do that. I'm pretty sure they would tell you they've heard from departments, but I would let Suzy speak to that.
And I can speak to it also, Mr. Lind. No, they didn't, because I asked them to not ask for those in their budgets. It's my request that we put those back, and that's, that will be, that will be my request, not the individual departments. They were, they were told by me or asked by me to not ask for those, to keep that flat. From last year, when we did not fill some positions, we didn't lay anybody off, we didn't, we just didn't fill some positions.
Correct.
The consequences of that decision wasn't that dire, was it? Didn't, we operated pretty well, didn't we? Well, as I said, Thursday morning, our crime rate has gone up. I don't think there's any coincidence that we've got fewer police officers and our crime rate's going up. Our response times from fire is getting higher. It takes longer to get to fires. I don't think that there's any coincidence that that's happening. And I also related a story about a lady that is alive today, that most likely wouldn't have been if it would have been on one of the days where we didn't have a full staff. So, that's my request. That's not coming from public safety. You know, there was a great quote in the paper yesterday. It says, "I don't think it's responsible to make a commitment to spending that's not sustainable." And Michelle handed out a personnel increase projection. It would devastate the city budget in five years. We'd really be in trouble. And you asked for some ideas, and, you know, I can't go through the budgets line by line. I don't, I'm not a department manager, that's what we were hired them for, but if I quick throw up two or three things, you know, if we take this budget that option seven, we need to cut $570,000. Animal control's $117,000. What if we reduce travel by 50%? I don't know what the number is, but I see travel requests all the time that are real expensive. Liability insurance is going up, $240,000. What if we said we want a higher deductible, or what if we bid it out? ICAP is out there, I've heard hundreds of times. I've heard from ICAP that they would probably insure us. I don't know, I just, I look at that budget, the spending is really up $800,000, because we count as a reduction in the budget a $231,000 pension decrease. Well, that's...
That's a reduction in cost.
Yes, but spending, spending.
That's a reduction in spending.
But we spend, we spend it on something else, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, or we reduced our overall requests for spending. Yeah, you're right. It just depends how you look at it. I mean, I don't think anyone took and said, "Oh, we're saving $263,000 in this line, so I can spend it in this line." It all falls into the bucket at the end.
Yeah, but still.
And it did, it did do that.
It's like a new job with more money, and they spend more, and we, I don't think we can continue on. You know, when you go out and look for cars, you can go look at a Cadillac, and you buy a base Cadillac, you can buy a luxury Cadillac, you can buy option seven, but you know what? Maybe you should be over looking at Chevrolets, and I think that's where we are in our budget deliberations. We keep looking at these Cadillac plans, and maybe we need to back off a little bit. And Tom, I think that those are great comments that you're making, but you mentioned three or four different areas. You mentioned animal control of $117,000. What were the other ones that you mentioned?
Liability insurance.
Oh, that's right. Liability, liability, insurance. Travel. Travel. I mean, I just, a quick look at some stuff, we spend, every time we have a meeting on a Monday, we approve travel requests, and I was always amazed, it's always $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. You know, we take that, that time's 52, now we're talking real money. But the reason that they're on those agendas and they come to you is for, to give you the opportunity to vote no, and, and if you get four people to vote no, then, then it doesn't happen. And, and hiring is kind of the same way. The reason that I expanded the human resources committee to the full council is if, if council doesn't want to hire people, if four people vote no, we won't hire. I know, but if it's in the budget, they can come and ask for the request, and it's in the budget, so it's likely it's going to be approved. That's just what I'm trying to do. Okay, so, animal control by 117, liability insurance to reduce it, and travel reducing by 50%, and I'm assuming you're talking about if we went to every department and reduced their travel request by 50%, is that... That's an idea, sure. Okay, okay. And was there something else? I'm sorry, I wasn't writing down when you were, when you were saying that. Animal control, travel, liability insurance, the things that jumped out at me. Okay, okay. I think we can work on those, and we can get you some numbers that would, that would do that. What I would, what I would ask in some of those things is particularly like in animal control, if we reduce that by $117,000, we need some directions as to what kind of coverage you want, and that's, that's where I'm running into, struggling just a bit with that, but we can do that. We can see how we can reduce that. And I don't know about reducing liability insurance. That would be a close answer, question.
We have been raising the deductibles over the last, we raised it three times, I think, in the last five years.
Maybe.
So, we have been incrementally raising it, kind of at a point where, I mean, we, we do look at that every year. The hard part with liability insurance is we don't get our renewals till after the budget's done. So, once council kind of sets the budget, then based on what estimates are, we do what we need to do to try and fit it in there. The hard part is there's a risk factor there. The higher the deductible, the more we pay in claims, and we're already at $250,000, so...
Yeah, I think we were at $50,000.
When I started.
Maybe five years ago, so...
Yeah, and I...
So, the problem is we're shifting, you know, we're reducing the premium slightly, we're increasing the amount we have to fund claims, probably more than slightly right now.
Sure, but, but, you know, it's stuff like we're paying, what do we pay our insurance agency to be a consultant? Eight grand or 10 grand or something? Take that out.
That was specifically when we started doing self-funded workers' comp, and when I started here, we did not even carry work comp coverage on police and fire, our two largest employee groups that probably have the most risk, because we couldn't afford it. And so, they chose just to go completely naked, I'll use that word, because that's what it was. We worked, we worked.
Michelle.
I know, it's just true. So, we worked on that, and we could not afford to go with IMWCA, which is kind of the sister organization to ICAP, because their rates, particularly for firefighters, was unbelievable. It was like $8 per $100 of cover payroll. It was hundreds of thousands, and we, we just couldn't afford it. So, our insurance agent at that time undertook helping us to set up a self-insured program with a third-party administrator. We found another work comp carrier that would cover police and fire, and so, they're, they're providing some additional services to us for that particular sum of money. That is saving us, we think, quite a bit, and hopefully, if there ever should be a tragedy, we're fairly well-protected, which I certainly hope we never have to find out, but that's why you have insurance.
I thought you had to have work comp insurance. I thought the state made you have, have work comp insurance.
They don't, they require us to pay the expenses. They don't really care how you do that. So, we can be self-insured, and we can write out every check ourselves, or, and, and that's what we do for a certain amount of the, the claims. We, there's a, we pay it up to a certain cap, and then it, it's kind of an interesting policy for work comp, but it's also got a ceiling, so we're, we're going to pay on the bottom end and the top end, but we do have insurance now, at least for the middle piece of that. And we have had, we have had a few claims that have exceeded the individual stop loss on that policy, not too many, but it does happen, so...
Oh, I misunderstood. You, you said we couldn't afford insurance. I thought therefore, we had no coverage.
Well, we were...
We covered it ourselves.
We, we would have had to, and had something drastic happened, we'd have had a very difficult time paying back at that time.
And we do bid out every year to carriers to find out. We do it through PDCM, but we do, you know, we have conversations with ICAP, we have conversations with other carriers, I mean, that certainly gets done every single year, and travelers has been our best bet for, I want to say, 40 or 50 years.
Michelle, can I ask one quick question, because I know we're running out of time, but what Councilman Lind mentioned about, you know, last year with the three fire and the three police, those were open positions, for lack of a better term, and, and so, we chose not to fill those.
Correct.
I didn't get a, a good sense this year, and maybe it's just because I'm having a hard time adjusting to the electronic, but I didn't get a good sense as we went through various departments. Are there positions like that in other departments this year, because in the past, it seemed like that was part of that...
That are vacant.
Each department, yeah, that, that maybe had been vacant for a period of time and would cause then us to say, well, gee, if we've been running without that position for three months, six months, do we need that position? You know, it kind of came up at, at code enforcement, and I don't think code enforcement's a good example for this discussion, but if that position hasn't been filled for some period of time, at what point in time does who say, gee, let's step back and, and do we need that position anymore?
Well, that is the purpose of our personnel requisition committee and why we bring each position through that committee and to the human resources committee. I haven't been asked this year to do like an overall list of vacancies. I, we could work on that, but it hasn't, hasn't come up till now, so I haven't.
Well, when you mentioned that, that's what made me think of it, so, yeah, if you could do that, I'd appreciate that if it's, if there's enough time. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, I mean, this is exactly the conversation I've been trying to get started for a while, and, and Tom, your suggestions, we will look into those, and that's, again, exactly what we're trying to kind of get conversation over is, are these kind of things, and, and, you know, vacant positions, you know, depends on if they're vacant for a week, or a month, or six months, or something, but we'll look into that also, Steve, so, and we are out of time, so... Mr. Mayor, one good question. I'd asked before... I'd asked before, what would be considered, is there, one of these options that is considered the mayoral budget?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
Okay. We'll meet again Thursday morning after the agenda meeting.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? All opposed? We're adjourned.
All the Boards and Commissions meeting. Madam Secretary, if you read the roll, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Hert. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion approved. The agenda is proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. David, would you like to take those two appointments?
Yes. So, number one, we have a motion to receive the final mayor clerk's recommendation for the following appointments. Casey Gardner for boards, for General Contractor Board of Licensing, Examiners, and Appeals with an expiration date 2/16/2018. It's a new appointment. And Chad Hill from Lorial Hall Commission with an expiration date of 2/16/2018. That is also a new appointment.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those two gentlemen are approved. Motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
All the Human Resources Committee order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hert. Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lind.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Motion approved. The agenda is proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carried.
I'd like for someone to take item one by itself, and then two, three, and four together, and then item five by itself.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you do that, can I move to table these items till after the budget is set?
Well, most of them are just beginning to fill the civil service process.
No, they're all to fill.
No, they're all appointments.
Oh, they are to make appointments, I'm sorry.
But if Mr. Lind makes that motion.
Yeah. Can we, would you, can we take them one at a time so we could kind of tell you what the ramifications of doing that would be? Department heads.
You mean, make the motion on each one?
Well, his motion is to table the entire thing.
Table them all.
I mean, I read all the attachments. I know it's up.
Okay.
There's no second anyways.
I second. If that's a motion. I thought you asked a question. I didn't know you made a motion.
It was my motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, to table that. Is there a discussion in regards to that?
I think we should take a vote.
Well, is there a discussion on this?
Yeah, I was asking.
Yeah. So, Ms. Cole says we should take a vote. I, I believe that we, some of these, I don't think we really have much flexibility in not filling. So, I would rather go one by one to talk about some of them. And others, I wouldn't mind putting on hold to gather more information and talk about other ways to get the work done than filling positions.
And the way that I look at this is that in looking through each one of these, there to fill a vacancy, and that means that if we don't fill these positions, that there's going to be work, more work getting undone. And to me, I, I just think that's irresponsible.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think some of the things that we may have had people doing within the city, we, we should look at options of doing other things. So, for example, labs, lab services, you know, I don't know if that has to be done on-site, or whether that's cost-effective to do on-site, or whether there's other options to do that in looking at these. So, for me, it's not just looking at positions like, okay, well, we've had this position for 50 years, and, well, somebody left, and of course, we have to fill it. Some of them, I think that is true. Some of them, I'd rather take another look at.
Well, right now, we have a motion and a second to table this. Let's go ahead and take a roll call on that first.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's to table the one, two, three, four, and five.
Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Ms. Cole.
No.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
No.
Mr. Welper.
No. Okay, that motion fails. Do you wish to hear the discussion of each of these?
Yes. Well, you can group them again, as you said.
We can group all five. If you'd like a discussion.
No, I don't want to...
Explanation on all five.
I want to talk about all five, but I think we could take them one at a time. It'll be clearer what we're intending to do.
You'd like to vote on them individually?
I...
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Having said that, I'd make a motion to approve a request from the city clerk for authorization to begin the recruitment process for Deputy City Clerk and make an appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the first request. Any discussion in regards to that?
I believe this is one that has to be filled, Suzy.
My professional opinion, yes. I'm already doing, we've already combined the department head job into two, and so, without me having basically a second in command, I have no idea how I would possibly get enough work done. And that is who does the council meetings and all of that when I'm not here.
When you're not here.
So, if I don't have a deputy that's given that ability...
Well, I'm just trying to ascertain, is, is this an optional position? I don't think it really is. Who else could fulfill that? If you were not here, who could fulfill that role?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, we would, you know, the only other option would be to appoint somebody else that's already here as deputy, but I don't have any vacant people to do that, that would be able to pick up any of those roles. Where my office is already down one staff member, and we have one new person, so that's a pretty important position. It supervises the clerks when I'm not in the office, and is my backup on everything I do.
Any further discussion, questions in regards to that request? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can we give a roll call, please?
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Lind.
No.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Number two.
Mr. Chairman. I move we approve a request from Waste Management Services Superintendent to initiate the civil service process to fill a position of lab services foreman at the Waste Management Services Department and make an appointment.
Can I take two and second?
Can I make a suggestion? I think you might want to start with number four, and maybe we need to have the department head explain what he's doing. Number four is if you don't do number four, you're nothing to do in two and three, I don't think.
They are. Would you like me to go to four? And then have...
I can start either end, whichever way you would like.
Would you like, Clark, to go over all two, three, and four?
Sure.
As long as he's up.
Yes.
Clark, would you do that, please?
Do we need to make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
There is a motion.
To approve two, three, and four, though?
Make the motion to...
Two.
Somebody tell me what to do. Do two, three, and four together.
Two, three, and four together.
All right. Item three is a request from Waste Management Services Superintendent to initiate the civil service process to fill a position of lab technician at Waste Management Services Department and make an appointment. Four is a request from Waste Management Services Superintendent to initiate the civil service process to fill a position of treatment operations foreman at the Waste Management Services Department and make an appointment.
Who seconded that?
Second.
That was Mr. Morrison. Okay, we have a motion, a second on two, three, and four. Larry, if you would like to explain those, starting with number four?
Larry Smith, Superintendent, Waste Management Services. I'd like to explain in an order that makes sense to me, but explain them all to you.
All right.
What has happened is that several years ago, we had an operations foreman, and what I did was I, I looked at the pre-treatment oper, a pre-treatment job, and decided there wasn't eight hours a day work for the pre-treatment coordinator. And so, I assigned the pre-treatment coordinator as the operations foreman also unofficially. Since then, as you know, we're having a little go-around with EPA and DNR. Brian was our pre-treatment coordinator. He was called the pre-treatment lab foreman. He also, as I say, was doing the operations foreman job. They have assigned us three additional things to do in pre-treatment that is very time-consuming, which means he could not do the other two positions. So, we looked at it again, and I talked to Brian, and he would rather be the operations foreman. And what we done there was all of our foremen are working foremen. And we took one of our operators, put them in the lab on a temporary position, and then we took one person out of the lab with the most experience and put them in pre-treatment. So, I'm not asking to hire anyone new, and I'm just asking to move three people around to fulfill the needs that we, that we have to do. It may seem that the operations foreman is new job. It's a job that we had for years until Keith Kearns moved up to the position he had in management, which was over maintenance and sewers. I haven't had Keith now for over a year, and I've been operating without that person, which is putting a strain on our department. And all I'm trying to do is move people into positions without asking to hire any additional labor-grade people to do the work we need to do. Clear as mud, right?
No, it makes perfect sense.
So, Larry, is there, is there a budget impact on that, Larry?
There will be a slight increase for the pre-treatment person. And I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is, but it's not...
I think it was about, I think, I thought I calculated it, and it's about $10,000 to eliminate the wastewater operator position and make all these changes. So, that was, I believe, the net impact. I don't have that with me, but I think that's what we were talking about. It's about $9,500.
So, you are eliminating a position?
Yes. I, I'm taking an operator's position and moving my, making a full-time now operations foreman, with the understanding that he is a working foreman, he will pick, pick up the additional duties of that operator as well as being foreman, rather than coming in and asking for an operations foreman and add an additional person to the department. I'm, I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to move people around. And because it's civil service, it has to go through the whole process.
So, it's creating a foreman position but eliminating an operator.
Larry, would this alleviate the strain that you're, had referred to?
It will, it will help out, yes. I mean, by having your, we need an operations foreman, and that's why I had the pre-treatment coordinator also acting as operations foreman. Now, with the additional workload that EPA and DNR is putting on us, I have to have a full-time pre-treatment coordinator. And so, it just made sense to take an operator, move them into another position, put that person out there as foreman, and he fiscal work. I mean, that's, that's part of his job. He's, he's a working foreman.
Okay. Any other questions?
Larry, can we still, can we appoint these positions and not increase the sewer rate?
Can we appoint these? That would be a question for Michelle. There, will these, will these result in an increase in sewer rates?
There are a lot of factors affecting sewer that we will visit more about on Wednesday, but this is an additional cost that, if you look at the '15 budget, we talked about raising rates, and we didn't at that time, hoping for additional information from the Department of Natural Resources and EPA. And we'll talk about that more on Wednesday.
See, this is exactly why I say let's wait until after the budget's updated, until we know the consequences of these actions we keep making.
I think for these three positions, that waiting a week is a little bit different, maybe than not filling positions that are vacant. There isn't a vacancy right now in that department. So, that might work for these three.
We've had the request in for quite a while, that I am moving union people around in different jobs. I, I don't know if the union will take objection to that or not. We did a good agreement for doing it for six months. That six months is well over.
Larry, how long will the civil service process, do you have any idea, take?
You'll have your budgets well done before the civil service process is done. It has to go to civil service for approval, the whole gambit. I mean, a minimum of, very minimum of two to three months.
Okay. Yeah, I get that.
And again, if you let us start the civil service process, that's the holdup. It doesn't mean that just soon as the civil service passes that we have to make these moves. They're already doing the jobs. And if you have a timeframe after that, what I don't want to do is wait another two or three months to get it to civil service, then wait another two or three months for the process to be done.
I think that, that was my point initially, is because I didn't see that these were to make an appointment, that I thought we were just starting the civil service process.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I don't have a problem with that, at least starting the initial process of the civil service. So, Larry at least has that much moving.
But it does say and make an appointment.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I didn't get it out.
Separate that.
So, it's not, all these motions have to be disputed.
She could amend her motion.
She'd have to amend.
To remove the make appointment.
I wrote these down.
I have, I have no problem with you removing the make appointment apart. I have no problem with coming back to the council. That way, it will be well after the budget.
Yes.
And at that time, if you don't agree, you have the option to reject it.
Right. Ms. Cole, would you like to amend your motion to initiate the process without the appointment on those three items?
Reluctantly, I will do that.
Does that need a second?
Yes.
Second.
All right. We now have the section to initiate the civil service process for two, three, and four without making an appointment. We have a motion, a second in regards to that. Is there any discussion on that?
Suzy, now that, does that mean...
It means it'll come back to you before we do anything. We'll just take it to civil service, get the job descriptions and all of that approved, and start that civil service process and get lists. But no job offers can be made, no, nothing, until it comes back to you guys for approval of filling any vacancies or making any changes. So, there's very minimal cost to the city for advertising at the, for the lab tech. The other two would be internal only, so there's, there's not much of an expense on an expense on that. And you guys would have complete power to say no at the end.
Any other questions? Hearing the- Madam Clerk, with a roll call, please, on two, three, and four.
Is this just to- on the amended motion?
Yes, this is on the amended motion to just initiate the civil service process for two, three, and four and not make an appointment.
Okay.
So I'm to the first motion, just out of curiosity. Where is that?
It was amended.
Carolyn amended it.
We need to vote on the amendment, and then we can vote on it as a whole. So this is just on whether or not to amend it?
Gotcha. Very good.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay. So the amendment passes now. We can go back to the original motion and vote on that.
This is the motion to initiate the process without the appointments on two, three, and four. Everybody understand that?
Without the appointment.
Without the appointment.
Yes, without the appointment.
Okay. Need a roll call, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, that motion has passed. Number five, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Waste Management Services Superintendent to appoint a code enforcement officer from the current civil service list.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on this request. Is there any discussion regards to this request?
So this is- this is a vacancy, to fill a vacancy, correct?
Yes, sir. We had a code enforcement officer transferred to another department. We have a list of three people. As long as it's been, I don't know if any of them are interested or not, but if they're not, then we would have to go back to civil service process.
And Larry, just, you know, for discussion purposes, this is one of those positions that does have the potential of having a revenue offset to the expense.
I think- I would like to be able to tell you how much, but I do believe there will be increased revenue, yes, more activity.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, need a roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Second.
Motion, a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, or adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll? Yes. Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion approved. The agenda and amendments as proposed. Second.
Motion, second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those travel requests.
Okay.
First, we have Mark Rice, Public Works Director, and that's for the spring conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, March 26th through the 27th, at an amount not to exceed $185. Next, we have Danielle Roret and one to be determined, and that's for the HUD Environmental Review in St. Louis, Missouri, March 22nd through the 25th, at a cost not to exceed $1,620. We have Chris Ferguson, Fire Lieutenant for the Basic Arson Investigator School in Ames, Iowa, from March 16th through the 27th, at a cost not to exceed $1,080. And we have Abraham Bunchez, Executive Director of the Human Rights Commission, Rebecca Johnson, HR Specialist, and Shelley Birch, Administrative Secretary for the 2015 NCRC Annual Conference in Washington, DC, March 24th through the 29th, at a cost not to exceed $9,585.39. We have Philip Schubert for the storm waters. He is a storm water specialist for the Iowa Water Conference in Ames, Iowa, March 2nd through the 3rd, at a cost not to exceed $275.70. I move we approve those five items.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there a discussion?
I guess on number four, just a clarification, that that amount does not come out of the general fund?
Michelle Weeden, our Chief Financial Officer, that's being funded by the EEOC contract or Fair Housing, I'm sorry, had to think for a minute, Fair Housing Fund, so it is federal funded.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass, and we have some pre-oths.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
Engineering, an amount of $3,990.36 for an AutoCAD Infrastructure Design Suite software support. Engineering, $2,007 for renewal of the maintenance agreement for PAVE plus VIEW and MAP Director ARC GIS system. Leisure Services, $2,205.17 for stainless steel corner guards. MIS, $9,282 for Dell TL 2000 backup tape library. Police, $6,451.60. This is an amended request to repair squad car 110, which was damaged in an accident assault case. Police, $6,408.64. This is an adjustment to a previously approved contract for printers and printing of document- documents for the police department. Sewer, $5,996.40 plus $300 shipping and handling. That's to repair on Harry's TR 3300 tractor crawler that carries sewer camera for TV van number 141114. Sewer, $21,218.42 for security cameras, video recorder, camera equipment accessories, and installation of equipment. And sewer, $4,244.95 plus $100 shipping and handling for a pair of chopper pump for Country View Lift Station, number two, pump.
Second. We have a motion, a second, have we discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move we approve Budget Line Item Amendment Number Seven, and that we pay the bills this week, which are $1,620,062.38, 1,620,062.38.
Second.
We have a motion, second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
This Monday, February 16th. We have some folks in the chambers, so welcome to all of you, and to all of you who might be watching us on our public access television channel. Madam Clerk, would you start by reading the roll calls?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Very good, thank you. If you would all join me in standing for just a moment in silent reflection, or per. Thank you very much. Our place tonight is going to be led by Ms. Julie Snyder, our Housing Authority Director. Julie, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Maybe sit.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and there's nothing for you to do, council. What you have on your laptop is correct, but apparently it was posted incorrectly. The posted correction is 25 West Commercial Street Unit Number Four. And also, the approval of the minutes of February 9, 2015, regular session, as proposed.
Doug it.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's 1A through 3B, and within that is the bills payment that Ms. Cole should have.
And the bills this week are $1,620,062.38, 1,620,062.38.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. I have two appointments that I'd like to recognize that are new to our boards and commissions. I don't see any unfamiliar faces in the audience tonight, so I'm assuming that Mr. Chad Hill or Mr. Casey Gardner, neither one are here. But we are appointing Chad Hill to the Memorial Hall Commission, and Casey Gardner to the General Contractors Board of Licensing Examining and Appeal. So to both of you, if you happen to be watching, thank you very much for saying yes to the city and volunteering of your time and your talents. Our boards and commissions are very important, and we much appreciate those folks that volunteer that time. So thanks, Chad, and thanks, Casey. Somebody could take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion received and filed proof of publication of the notice of public hearing, and that's for the fiscal year 2014 Belt Filter Press Edition, contract number 869.
Check it.
Council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the Belt or Filter Press Edition?
There were none.
Do you know one in the audience who would like to speak either for or against item number two? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Check it.
Council, you have any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Check it.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Waste Management Services Superintendent for review.
Check. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we had three bids on this article tonight. Madam Clerk, could you tell us what they were, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we had two bids. The engineer's estimate was $1,700,000, and we had two bids.
The first bid was from WHR Inc. of Omana, Iowa, for $1,449,001,449,000.000.00. The second bid was from Woodruff Construction LLC of Fort Dodge, Iowa, for $1,558,500,1,558,500.00.
Thank you very much. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number three is a motion received and filed proof of publication of notice of a public hearing that's for the turf maintenance equipment.
Check.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written objections on file for turf maintenance equipment?
There were none.
Do you have anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this item? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Check.
Council, you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Check.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes. Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Leash Services Director for review.
Check.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, very good, that motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we had two bidders for this equipment, Van Wall Equipment and PNK Midwest. The bids were very confusing on this. I have a whole sheet full of numbers, and I'm not even sure if we've been able to calculate and figure out exactly with all of the trade-in values and everything, who is actually the bid winner. But all of the numbers are on file in the clerk's office. Mr. Hudding has been provided that, and we will figure out who the winners are and make that known. And if anybody wants to look, these numbers are all on file in the clerk's office. But I think it would be confusing at best if we tried to read all of these. So, having said that, let's do resolutions, and if we could do four, five, six, and seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
Four, I move we adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement with AECOM for design services associated with the FY 2013 projects at the Waterloo Regional Airport in the amount of $90,100, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Five is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Cedar Valley Corp. of Waterloo, Iowa, at a total cost of $545,806.57 for the FY 2013 project for the rehabilitation of taxiway B at the Waterloo Regional Airport. Six is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work by Aspro Inc. of Waterloo at a total cost of $990,681 for the FY 2012 project for the rehabilitation of taxiway E at the Waterloo Regional Airport. And seven is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by KNW Electric Inc. of Cedar Falls at a total cost of $889,553.51 for the FY 2012 project for the construction of the airfield lighting vault at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Cole, council, do you have any questions regarding any of those four for the airport? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Motion's carry. Eight, nine, and ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morris.
I'd like to make a motion approving change order number one for a net increase of $2,745.50 for the fiscal year 2014 Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract Number 816, and authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document. And number nine is adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation And number nine is adopt a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for, for work performed by Rickups Excavating Limited of Anamos, Iowa, at a total cost of $276,150.50 for the fiscal year 2014 Orange School Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract Number 816. And number 10, a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates document for 25 West Commercial Street Unit Number Four due to the sale of the property.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Morrissey, counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those three? It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Eleven, twelve, and thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item 11 is adopting a resolution approving the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement for the RNS Commercial LLC, adding $3,150 to city responsibilities, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute any necessary documents. Item 12 is adopting a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for a rise funding for local development and improve the memorandum of understanding with InterCog for the writing, preparation, and submittal of said grant for the Midport Boulevard extension in an estimated amount of $2,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents. And 13 is adopting a resolution to allow $25,000 in hotel motel taxes to the Convention of Visitors Bureau to be used for special projects using forfeited tax grant funds. Second.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, counsel, any questions regarding 11, 12, or 13?
Mr. Mayor, what, what are the special projects on number 13? What do we mean special projects? And, and the other half of that question is, could we take that money and put it in the general fund?
No, you can't do that, know that.
Well, it's a question, I mean, it's a thousand dollar question.
Right.
Answers can never be simple to some of these questions. Shaw Weigner, CFO. Technically, the state law would say we have to use half of the hotel motel taxes to support tourism. Our city ordinance says, lays out very specifically how we have to use it, and this portion is required to be used for tax grants. I think we would want to have the CBB speak to you directly about how they would, how they request to use it for special projects.
They're not here.
Apparently not, kind of surprised.
Could we get that information still, no?
Yes, we'll get it to you.
This doesn't necessarily, those special projects wouldn't necessarily be identified at this time, though, correct? These are future special projects?
I believe so, but we'll have to check with the CBB.
And do we know would they necessarily come before counsel for approval, or do we know that?
I, I believe in this case it would not, because that's why they're asking for this. Because I think their thought was, it's already been awarded. It was already awarded to other entities that couldn't use it, so.
Are, are you the liaison?
No, I'm not.
Meeting's tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I am too.
I do, okay.
Do you know anything about this?
No. Counsel?
We don't know what it is until tomorrow's meeting.
Okay.
Could I make a friendly motion to table this until next week, until we have more information? Second.
Okay. So, you made the motion?
I'd like to, yes.
And Mr. Lind seconded it.
For what?
So, there's a motion and a second on item 13 to table that?
For one week. Well, and we're not meeting next week, right? Did I see that?
I might.
That was March.
Oh, that's March, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so for one week.
Nope.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on item 13 to table that for one week. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Cole?
No.
Okay, motion carries. That'll be table for one week. Let's vote on item 11 and item 12, please. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. That's the end of our regularly scheduled business for tonight, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for oral presentation, so if any of you would like to speak to the mayor, counsel, please do so at this time. Just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth Street. I've been to a lot of council meetings, and there are a number of times that I've been here that, that we have a increase, even though it's $2,745.50 to a contract that's the same number. We keep giving people more money to the same job that they were supposed to do in the first place, is my view. Thank you.
Thanks, David. I did, is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Forrest Dillow, 1725 Huntington Road. When I'm out in the public, I get to ask lots of questions about what goes on down here, and I don't know a lot, but I tell them what I know. I've been asked a lot about the KWWL deal, and I would like to have some transparency in that deal.